Would everyone stand to say a pledge?
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as well.
Thank you everyone. Please, Bob, can you do the roll cut piece?
Yes, member Liker. Member Pacer.
Here.
Petroselli.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
Vidka.
Here.
Waterman Kopa.
Here.
Thank you very much. I want you to do the other members.
Greco.
Here.
Beck, present. Palumbo.
Here.
Han, Leiza.
Okay, under, on the first agenda item is the minutes approval for the April 7th, 2025. Does everyone have a chance to review? Or does that even have any comments? Does that, can someone make a motion to approve?
Absolutely.
And a second? Second. And all in favor, I, motion passed.
Abstained.
Abstained.
True abstained.
Motion passes for, um, to zero with two abstentions, please.
And Petroselli and Liker, right?
No.
It was motion by Petroselli, seconded by Leifner, and then Wes and Wally have abstained.
Right, okay.
Motion passes for zero. Okay, under old business, we have, um, log 2025 PBO5 for 135 Evans, a broker apartments and people's ink signage approval. Can someone approach the dais, state your name, and what you would like to do?
Uh, good evening, I'm Chris McCaffrey with Aldrich Sign Company here. We have people and enjoying by Matt Long and Brian Smith, um, so we can answer any questions. We, um, kind of brought a new landscape in place, that was one of the concerns of the last meeting. We've been talking about the placement, so I think we're in agreement that moving the sign to the, I'll say the center of the property, um, versus to the north end, um, we, we agree with that suggestion. Um, the setback will be about, you said thirteen feet from the sidewalk, Matt?
Yeah, I think if, so we're a lot, we can get a waiver, I believe, anything under ten. I think if it were five feet, it might be more appropriate between that and the next, um, area there with the concrete would fit in a little better. There wouldn't be any sightline impediment there, about twelve to fifteen feet from the sidewalk.
So then you're not looking for a waiver?
We would look for a waiver that would five feet, though, if we did it that way.
So you'd be five feet behind the right of way, is what it's saying.
Five feet behind, yeah, on the property line.
Could you come and show us that, because it's a little different than you showed.
Sure.
I'm gonna pass it now. Do you want to start or bring it on down?
The landscape.
Just so we can word the motion correctly.
Should I just pick them, than this one, than the one that was in our package?
No, it's still the same, that's just a right of way.
So, we were, we only showed half of the side, but I believe in the wall.
Right, right, that's why I want.
So we were showing it, we were showing it, this hole is there, so then we're gonna show it in here, so the sidewalk there, the ten-foot setback line is right here, anything closer to it is five, so we would be about in the five-foot zone, which would keep it off of, this is so small, I don't think we can, so if we're in that zone there, we're a little close to that sidewalk, so they need a little bit of reading room, so if we have the five, we can then wiggle it in there, try to center it out in that area. Okay, does that make sense?
You're getting five feet from the, from the sidewalk.
Five feet to the property line.
Property line.
Sidewalk's about twelve feet, it's whatever that dimension ends up being, but I'd rather do it from the property line, so you understand it, so we're not, we hold into, you know, okay, we're alive and.
The dimension needs to be from the property line.
Just from the property line.
So he's saying five from the property line, that doesn't need a waiver, that is within.
Uh, yes, five feet needs a waiver.
Oh, and then he's ten back.
The standard is ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's also, there's also.
But it's all from the sidewalk, I'm sorry.
There's also.
Hang on, hang on a second, go back here. Here, just tell us, tell us.
All right. There's a setback from the sidewalk, there's also a setback from the property line.
Okay.
So, starting over again, um, ground sign has to be ten feet from the property line, and I'm gonna have to find where we refer to the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, I believe it's, it's, um, well, might, actually, that might just be for pole signs.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it was in, to my knowledge, I think it was just the property right of way.
I'm going to have to look that up elsewhere, but if the planning board approves this location with a waiver of the ten-foot setback, we'll figure the rest out. Because some way there is an offset. I don't know where it is, because I wasn't prepared to look for it.
I was just asking.
I can see where the.
To the property line. You don't think we were.
I couldn't be wrong, I could be.
Oh, eighty-four.
It'll give you a little wiggle, but it's a plate that. Yeah, there's a waiver, but it's not against.
So, we need some clarification. So our packets is, as one of the members has already identified, has had a different sign than what's on here. So which one are you proposing?
You didn't lie like that, you told.
The big telephone number, past the bridge on line.
Oh, oh, this is, this is, this is.
So that is a HDU sign with another, with a piece that's been added on?
Yeah, but the bolt, bolted to cabinet, like I just brought last one.
Is, but this, does the sign go all the way down, or is the small, a phone number added to the bigger sign?
It's attached to the, so it's, it's a cabinet, because the cabinet's the whole panel on the side, this is the same thing, it's a cabinet, that is dangling from the.
Right, so you can see that.
And you're gonna see through here.
Correct, okay.
Yes, you are.
You can't look, like the way the other one looks.
I can too.
I like the stars and like.
If you guys like.
Wow, it's just.
So how would you do that? Would I put a cabinet on with the bars?
If I did the bars, I would do a whole panel on the side of the bars, behind it, or maybe put a whole panel on the side. So, I mean, you are that way too. If you just put that, what's that changing the size or anything? So it's still the same square footage. And I don't, I don't know a lot of. Yeah, if you say.
Nancy, architect, he gives it a second.
You know what they're saying?
Bars are no bars.
You can, I just wanna know which one is the one we're looking at.
Are they bought or sold? They're like this one? Bars it is.
Bars it is.
Okay.
Is that, is that part of the application that Carol has that filed?
So one is in our package.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure, yeah, so this, this is the way this, we're gonna put the bars, which is what you have.
Yes, okay.
But I'll, but you, I'll give you one with the landscaping too.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't change the overall.
All right, so this is the one.
Underneath the middle, it's twelve inches high and.
Thank you, and thank you, okay. All right. So, do we have any other questions? We have, okay, Gary, you answered.
The offset from the sidewalk is, is also five feet, so since the property line is closer to the building.
Right.
The five feet from the, uh, property line, just, no, is a waiver.
It is a waiver.
There's no waiver necessary from the offset to the sidewalk, just the five-foot front setback.
Just the property line?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we should handle the waiver first, and then we'll deal with landscaping, there's the lighting and, uh, the actual sign. So, I will, um, make a motion to grant a waiver from the requirements in, I have this Gary.
I have it, I had it in one of the emails, I'll tell you what it is, it's eighty-four dash eighteen. I'm working on it. Um, eighteen C.
One through three.
And it would be C1.
C1.
And it's then specifically the minimum setback is waived from ten feet. The minimum setback of ten feet is waived for a sign to be located five feet from the property line.
Okay, so make a motion for a waiver from requirements of eighty-four dash one eight, so eighteen C1, for the minimum setback of ten feet from the property line. Um, and the applicant will have, has proposed five feet from the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wally, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, uh, six to zero for the waiver. Now moving on to the sign, so we'll deal with landscape and signage separately, and this is still not illuminated, well, it's now not illuminated.
Correct.
Okay, um, so let's deal with the sign first, the sign placement. Um, do we have something with that marked up? Can we get something with that marked up?
We gotta leave something here with it marked up. We don't have that.
We don't have that drawn.
Be located, ready, all.
Yeah.
I'm perceiving, so this will be.
Why?
About a feet setback.
Yeah.
In the center area.
Yep. So right here, perpendicular to the, um, perpendicular to the center of the circle, of the sidewalk circle. Okay. Blue. Green.
Yeah, got it.
Did you see it, Tom?
I did.
Okay. Okay, so, we're going to. Okay. Um.
Can I just get a little?
Four, oh, it's five.
I have red for this.
Five, what is it, second? Second to me?
Exactly.
Five. That's right, two. Okay, so we're gonna use this. So, um, let's deal with the sign itself first, and then the location, and then the, the landscape. So, am I making or is anybody wanting a motion? It's not this sign, it is actually watching this sign. To the side, and then make this, this exhibit A. Does anyone want to make a motion to, I'll make a motion, to approve. The sign is depicted on exhibit A dated two eighteen twenty-five, um, for broker home people ink.
Two eighteen.
So this is two eighteen twenty-five. Oh, revised three ten twenty-five.
But the new location, is this, is the, is the bottom gonna be the same?
And the maximum thirty-six, so, but then as. Yeah, I mean, it's probably gonna be thirty-six. Yeah, maximum of thirty-six, so we'll even put in here thirty-six max. So if they need to lower the foundation there, to make it look appropriate, then they can lower the foundation, since you're no longer on a steep hill. So thirty-six max, um, and the material that's depicted and the colors he's depicted, um, which the brick is to match the brick on the building, you already stated that.
Yes.
And the foundation was to match the water table on the building.
Correct.
And then we know this is a high-density urethane double-sided sign with a aluminum cabinet?
Correct.
Aluminum cabinet, painted the maybe.
Yes, it's the deep ocean blue hard side.
Cut the color, and that's the deep ocean blue, right. Okay. And the, and the foundation's the same, you?
It's, it's the same, lots of, it's a double monorail brick, same to match the, um, the base of the buildings.
Is that ocean blue?
Deep ocean blue.
And it was a carved sign or an applied sign?
It, it's a recessed background with raised lettering.
Okay. So, there's a motion then to approve the sign as submitted on exhibit A, drawing dated two eighteen twenty-five revised three ten twenty-five, with the following clarifications, that the sign is to be a high-density urethane sign with raised lettering, with an aluminum cabinet, signed cabinet, um, in the color deep ocean blue. The brick that flanks the HDU is to match the buildings, and the foundation of the sign is to match the base of the buildings. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero, since it's exhibit A. We'll do location next. So the, the sign's location that has been amended, um, is to be, have a five-foot setback from the, uh, property line between buildings B and C, perpendicular to the center of the walkway, um, circle that is identified on drawn C2, um, of the construction set dated seven five twenty-three. How's that be? Is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero, exhibit C. Um, the applicant has proposed Canada Anemone and Smooth Blue Aster, um, to be the, the ground landscaping around the sign as depicted on exhibit C.
Are you still proposing that, even with the new location?
You change your mind? Come on, Beck.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the landscape material as submitted on exhibit C, um, which is sign elevation with landscaping dated four eight twenty-five, including Canada Anemone and Smooth Blue Aster. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Get the vote for that.
Thank you.
The last vote.
And, just to be clear, this is a non-incombinative sign for the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will give this off to the department, and I don't think there was anything else for that.
I got it.
Thank you. Moving on
Lot of changes.
to the second item on the agenda, first item of new business this evening. It is for log twenty, so. Twenty twenty-five PBO6, um, for five five six zero Main Street, seven one six Realty sign requesting a waiver.
Hello?
Thanks.
Uh, my name's Gregory Strauss, I'm the owner of Seven One Six Realty Group. Uh, we recently moved from Maine in Brockton to the village here, and across the street, actually. Um, so forgive me, I'm not familiar with the whole process, but I'll just kinda give you my thoughtful guess, and I'll go clear. So, uh, as I understand it, so what we did when we moved down is, I brought my sign expert, A.K., my father, and we looked at the sign below us, uh, Buffalo Gift Emporium, and said, well, that's way too much signage, so let's do something small and tasteful. I'm a second story, uh, it's a second story sign where office space is, um, and we, he went to his friend who's a sign maker in town of London, made a little vinyl, and we put it, he, he put it in the window. Uh, immediately when we found out, we needed to do an application, we did the application and filed it, paid the hundred dollars, and then was denied on March twenty-first, uh, planning that we need a, a waiver. So, here seeking a waiver for the, the mathematics is worth fifteen percent over on the window signage, um, which is, is partially our phone number, so I know just listing in the back, that was, I don't know if that matters to the vinyl window sign or not, um, but just really, yeah, requesting a waiver for that, uh, the, the, the current size they have to this.
Okay, thank you, Gregory. Um, so we give waivers for exceptional design for, because nothing else will work. So, I think the feeling of the board is neither of those conditions are meant, um, to allow the signage. Um, where is the entrance of your, where do you enter for someone works there?
So the, it's at the bottom right, I don't know if you have this diagram?
Yeah.
So, um, to the bottom right, there's a door.
Yeah.
So it's really just honestly, people are trying to understand what our location is, and that's our main space. Uh, we do a lot of it in the building as well, so I guess the, the question, I guess, is like, so, I mean, I, I basically did the mathematics, I just have to delete the word group to my phone number, I'd like to not do that, um, rather than like straight, I would have to redo, so I don't know how that exactly works, uh, but that's where.
So, so you originally submitted this, with the sign up without the permit, right?
Yeah, I did not know that whole process.
You are, you are a real estate broker, right? Licensed broker?
I, I am, yeah.
Usually, usually an understanding of local ordinances is part of your job?
We looked at the lower, uh, Phillipic signage, and the professional landlord, they said, yeah, you're fine. So obviously, we, uh, we lean on our neighbors and our landlord for some advice, but that's.
Also professional, just saying. It was also professional, just saying.
So, so, you know, my, my, my feeling is that number one, because this was put up without a permit, and, um, I don't like being a rubber stamp. And as Kate has mentioned, there's nothing exceptional about this. In fact, your own description of it isn't about identification, it's about branding, it's billboard, is what it really is. Um, if you really want people to find your building, there's other ways to do it that are conforming to our, to our standards.
So our code lists many different types of signs as options, um, and to create the character that we're trying to do in the village setting, which I'm sure is why you want to be here for your business as well, um, you know, there are other signage types that could, that could benefit the building as well as your business, um, like a projecting sign at, at the door that you want people to, to enter from, and when they're seeing that with all of our vehiculars, as well as pedestrian traffic, um, and although it's not a sign board, the fascia of this building has been used as a sign board, um, so you could come back to the planning board with something above that door, um, the fascia as an opportunity for identification of where one would enter your, enter for your business.
So, so just, just to make sure I understand correct, so the options are sign board, or basically anything other than vinyl, even if behind the window.
You could shrink that.
Yeah, I, I could, yeah.
You could shrink that, and it would be, I guess it would be conforming. The point is it needs to be conforming, and it's not.
Have we cleared that up, if they're allowed to sign it on the second floor?
Yes, yeah, uh, the sign officer went through that, and where we specifically say you can't have, um, signs above this, the second floor windowsill, is for a sign board. As the chair just pointed out, there is a sign board below that.
No, there isn't.
Well, the, the fascia is being used for one, um, but it doesn't apply to, I'm sorry, it doesn't apply to, to window signs. Um, but what does apply to window signs, one of the, one of the few things that apply to window signs, is that you cannot be greater than twenty-five percent of the window area. If this diagram is correct, and the window area is thirty square feet, the total sign can't be greater than seven point five feet.
Does it matter at all difference to second story, because you have to look a little farther?
Uh, most, the, the general intenting guidance, if it's not specific in here, is there aren't second floor signs. So, no, no, bigger signs aren't encouraged on second floors.
Correct.
No signs are, are really encouraged in second floors.
And if you do look around, like at the Rock, I think there's a sign, I think there was some kind of sign on the seventh or third floor.
That's, that's actually, that's, that's a local landmark.
That's true.
So that, local landmarks don't need to follow the zoning, um, they need to submit for a certificate of appropriateness to, to let the, that committee determine whether something's appropriate for that building.
So, so, so basically I have to scrape off my phone number to be in the allowance.
Whatever is seven point five feet or less.
However you do it.
Okay. Okay.
Or, or you can apply for a different type of sign.
Do I need a sign permit if I have, like, so that's my conference room, and I have a wonderful incorporated eighteen fifty sign behind my conference room. It's not on the window, actually, it's just a freestanding.
The, the sign regulation talks about interior signs, it's not something that would be regulated.
It's not, right?
If it's hanging in the window, it is.
Right, it would be hanging in the window, it's my conference room. Okay, understood, thank you.
So.
Didn't take action?
We didn't, so should we?
You should, and you.
So, make a motion to deny the request for a waiver for five five six zero Main Street Suite Two, Williamsville, New York, on the basis that it is not an exceptional circumstance or exceptional design for that property. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
So, the only thing I will, that our, our add is really what the, the standard is, or may, you know, you can grant a waiver for many requirements this chapter on showing an applicant that unique characteristics of his or her property render strict application with such requirements impractical, and that such waiver is consistent with the overall intent of the charter. So I just, is that, now, maybe this, uh, the exceptional design perhaps is wrapped up for this, maybe the, the overall intent of the chapter, but that's actually not language, that's not actually a basis literally for granting a waiver. So it's practically, it's basically, if there's something unique about the property that makes strict compliance with the code difficult, like, say like the weird sort of topography of the broker person, um, would be something like that. Um, and that such waiver is consistent with the overall check. They really need to make those drawings.
Okay.
Which they did.
Do we need to add something there?
No, I don't think that's.
You wanna reference the section.
Yeah, what is that?
It's eighty-four dash five C four.
But in fact, I'm taking this phone number and group, I can take off two, actually is name recognition and not billboard, you know what I'm saying, it takes it out of the billboard, in my opinion.
It's not a billboard.
The phone number, so, nobody's writing down the phone number.
Yeah, but frankly, you know, I mean, it doesn't really matter what it's, I mean, if he meets the, if he meets the dimensional.
Right.
There's nothing.
I'm just, I'm just saying that we talked about it being.
Yeah, we also traditionally have not allowed phone numbers.
Right. I'm just saying, nobody's writing down the phone number.
Right, but that's not, that's what I'm saying, but that's not.
That's not what we're.
That's not what we're talking about. I'm just saying it is in the site.
The problem with what just happened is whatever he does needs to be, I, I don't see a revised permit application forthcoming to, to Carol.
Well.
Um, we need another drawing with dimensions.
Yeah, he should need contact, right. If he thinks he's just gonna go scrape off.
He was, he was just upset.
He still needs, he needs to apply, he needs to put a compliant or permit application in, so this is unfiled.
Modifying what we got.
Carol, Carol, can you contact him and just ask him to reconsider?
Okay.
So, and I'll make a modification to my motion with the amendment to say per section eighty-four dash five dash C four. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Amendment, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that, that motion just is gonna say per and then the section number for the waiver.
Okay.
Um, so eighty-four dash five dash C four. Thank you.
Can I put some parentheses in there for you? Sure.
Okay, so that's it for old new and new business. So the next, um, next meeting is on June second. Um, have we had any applications for that?
No.
No.
There's no site plans, um, so the only thing that possibly can still come in would be signs, or if someone wanted to come in with the pre-application meeting for a site plan, pre-application conference, or revision to a site plan. I don't think we have anything. We don't know of anything out of it.
There are some opportunities out there, so let's see what we can. So look for, um, something in your email a week before, or maybe whether we have any planning work in, in June. So let's close this meeting. So I'll make a motion to adjourn, and so, eight oh three, all in favor?
Aye.
So calling second, all in favor? Um, and then the community plan, um, uh, so those that can make it, next meeting is at South High School. Encourage your friends and neighbors to come. Um, the college is going to lead.